Sorry folks, we're waiting for our city clerk to come forward. We can't start the meeting without her. I think we surprised the city clerk by being back on time. We had a lot of important people, so they... Usually we don't get back right around seven o'clock. We tend to run a little later, but today we have such important people in the audience, we didn't want to be late. Mr. Mayor, would you like to sing a song while we're waiting? He has a good voice, by the way, just so you know.
Exactly what I was afraid of, Mr. Gropol Samra, opening the mic.
And here comes our city clerk.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular council meeting for April 1st, 7:10. Can we please stand?
Detail forward, march! Detail move! Detail present, march!
Everybody grab a swatch of allegiance to the God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military service members. You may now take a seat.
Detail, order, march! Detail move! Forward, march!
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Opal.
Present.
Councilmember Wallace.
Present.
Mayor Protim Samra.
Present.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
For the record, all council members are in attendance.
Thank you. Next, we have close session announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The close session has been continued to the end of the regular scheduled meeting, so there's no announcements at this time.
Thank you. Council, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing now, we're moving forward. Next, we have awards, presentations, and proclamations. Item number one, presentation by Councilmember Jabjit Singh Opal with the recognition of the City of Livingston Explorer Scouts and recognition of participants, officers, and volunteers involved with the Livingston Explorer Scouts.
Testy.
Check, check. Hello? Good. Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Jabjit. Have the pleasure of serving on the council with our fellow members up here. Really appreciate all of our scouts, parents, volunteers coming out tonight. Really quickly, I want to give a very brief introduction to who we are and what we do. We are the Livingston City Council. We oversee the city of Livingston, the staff, its budget, and also we get to decide kind of what gets done in town and what doesn't from a high level. We don't work full-time for the city, however, we do oversee the staff that do. That gentleman right there, that's Mr. Jose Ramirez. He's the city manager of Livingston, kind of like the CEO of the city if you thought about it as a company. So right here is our city attorney, Mr. Santos. Very expensive, but saves us a lot of money in the long run. We have a number of other city staff who are here tonight. Do you mind raising your hands really quickly so folks know who you are? We have Martha Abalo, who's our... works in community development and also serves as a clerk several times when we need it. We have Mr. Anthony Chavaria, Public Works Director. We have Mr. Jesus Chavez, Water/Wastewater Manager. We have Mr. Mario Gueva, City Engineer. We have RC, who's in charge of HR. Hi, RC. Hi, Jackie. She's our Rec Director. If you've played any sports in Livingston growing up, swimming, basketball, soccer, et cetera, Jackie organized that and was there even though you may not have seen her. We have our Police Chief, Mr. Schiff. Gentleman from FIRE. I do apologize, my first time meeting you and I don't know your name. We have representation from FIRE. Happy Baines, Assistant City Manager and Finance Director. And then we have Mr. Mike Levitt back there who makes sure that people can see this on YouTube. So yeah, that's who we are. Really appreciate all of you guys coming out tonight. The chief is... and the rest of PD are very ecstatic about the work you guys do and they wanted to make sure that we can recognize you. We're more than happy to do that. So tonight, our council is going to present some community service awards to our scouts. During 2024, from January to December, all the scouts that you see in this room accumulated over 15,000 hours of community service, which is just an obscene number. You guys are out everywhere, from the Nogad Gitan on Sunday to Christmas events, to really anything else going out in town, going on in town. They show up, they serve. Assuming they don't cause many problems, you guys are always happy to talk about them. And they're here tonight, and we're here to recognize them. Our explorer program also has some incentive trips for these students, which they deserve. They get taken to go play paintball, to go to Great America, Santa Cruz, Universal Studios, et cetera. And to participate in the program, the program offers teens and young adults a personal awareness of the criminal justice system through mentoring, hands-on training, and practical applied experiences. They work directly with our law enforcement in town, with our PD, and it promotes personal growth through character development, discipline, respect for the rule of law, and physical and mental emotional fitness. And through this program, the PD is happy to say that these explorers gain self-discipline, respect, work ethic, and a great sense of leadership. And so, we're going to recognize these students in a few groups. The first award is going to be for explorers who have together accumulated over 15,000 hours of community service and are very close, some of them, to reaching the 500-hour service mark. I know we have at least one explorer in the room who's at 496, so whoever you are, I know you're very close and we'll be happy to give you your 500-hour award at the next ceremony. And so at this point, I would like to call Officer Baldivia, who works with the explorers heavily, to announce their names and to give them some certificates. I would like to request that the council come down, if they're willing, to shake all of their hands as they come up, and we will be awarding them some pins here as well. So just bear with us as we get through, but we want to recognize this first group. That's Officer Baldivia. If you'd like to announce those explorers there. And so if you guys want to come here, grab a pin, shake everybody's hand, and then get a certificate from Officer Baldivia, that'd be perfect.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let's start with the under 500. We've got Melissa Zarco. Odessa Baldivia. Nazaret Herrera. Jesus Herrera. Galilea Herrera. Ablin Cor. Caleb Fields. David Jeffrey. Devanch Sinhi. Sarai Perez. We normally would have more explorers here tonight, but they all have personal business to attend to. The second half of this is going to be for the explorers who achieved over $500 for the year 2024. Angel Bassey. Ada Polito. Abigail Morales. Emmanuel Hernandez. Dana Montano. It's going to take her a while to get here. She just had her knee taken care of. Alice Baldivia. Angel Pantaleon. Felipe. Is Felipe here? Felipe Ariano. Ariel Magdaleno. There should be one more, but it's not in the stack. It would be for Ruby... Ruby Valencia. We have it right here. We have it right here. Ria Reyes. Yep, I would never do that. Okay. So just a little bit about these explorers. These explorers work hard, you know, parents. These kids don't work hard at home. They say they don't know how to work hard at home.
If they don't know, if they say they don't know how to work, work hard at home, they're lying to you. Okay? Because when they are with me, when they are with us doing details, they work hard. When we go to Pebble Beach and do these details, these kids, these explorers, they are up anywhere from 2:00 to 3:00 in the morning to get ready. Okay? And then we hit the road by about 4:00, 4:30, and then they are on their feet all day. They get breaks, plenty of breaks, but nevertheless, they, they work through the day. It could be a, thank you, Chief. It could be a 10-hour day, sometimes it's a 14-hour day. So the ones that are not here, Gabriela Weaver. Denise Andehas. Iker Salas. Babancho Saini. I'll just give them to you. Ivan Moreno. Angel Trejo. Santiago Alvarez. Derek Penya. Ramiro Morales. Candice Penya. Carlos Gutierrez. He's actually here. Come here, buddy. Juan Carlos. Joel Huerta. Madison Circus. Mia Moreno. Mia Nieves. Nereo Cortez. Ryan Baldivia, he's one of mine. Xavier Martinez. And Yvette Gutierrez.
Thank you. Thank you again, officers for presenting. Scouts, thank you again. Not everybody's willing to do community service. Don't necessarily blame them for it, but we all know that what drives a community forward is people stepping up and doing that. And we have this many folks doing it at a young age. I know it makes us really excited and really confident about what's coming next for the city and what's gonna drive us forward. So thank you all to, to getting these kids in early on and we really commend you guys, you know, for putting in those hours because not everybody's willing to do it, right? It's easier to go home and play Fortnite or watch a show or whatever. It takes commitment to put in all those hours and be willing to take that extra step. PD and, and council really also wanted to recognize all the adult volunteers who put in time and, and energy and resources selflessly to help this program run. They wanted to say that they, that they commend you for providing tireless support to our youth, supervising trips away, providing expertise and mentoring, the essential characteristics that the Explorer Program instills in our youth. Again, everything from discipline to respect to building teamwork and leadership capabilities. And so, they are, you know, really taken away by all that you do for the program along with these students. And at this point, we would like to, we would like to call them forward as well. And so, Officer Baldivia, I'm not sure if you want to announce the names of the adult volunteers.
Tony Marquez. She here? No? Ah, he's not here. Alan Cadiante. Annabelle Perez. Sergeant Jason Barkis. Brandalyn Baldivia. That's, that's, she actually really runs the program. I'm just... That's you. Isaac Escobar. They're gonna shake hands? Jackie Benoit. Jackie. Officer Alejandra Perez, she's not here. Nikki Such, not here. And Francisco Fiero.
Thank you, Officer Baldivia, and thank you again for the adults and the parents who put in so much time to help drive this program forward. There is one last award that's gonna be presented today. I don't think it was agendaized, but it is here now. And this is actually for Officer Jesus Baldivia, who is an 18-year veteran of the Livingston Police Department and works tirelessly, clearly with his, with his wife, to help, you know, put this program together and give an opportunity to all of these students. I went through our school system here in Livingston, was not an explorer and generally stayed out of trouble, so I did not interact with Officer Baldivia much. But everything I hear is, is very positive from the PD and from the students that I've talked to that have participated. Just a little bit of info about Officer Baldivia. He received the 2015 Officer of the Year Award. He's received six Merit Awards for his exceptional public service, eight community service awards based on the time that he's put in, four Good Conduct Awards for outstanding performance reviews as a police officer, and two Safe Driver Awards for 10 years of safe driving with no accidents. The kids don't think he's a safe driver, clearly. It looks like we haven't had to pay anything though, so it's good on our end. In 2012, Officer Baldivia participated in the startup of the Livingston Police Explorer Post 518 Program. And as the lead advisor, he has facilitated over 300 Livingston youth through the program. And again, that's big time. Any services we have for our youth are great. I know our Rec Department works tirelessly to put things together on their end, but the more active that we can get with the kids from an early age, the better. And we really commend, you know, Officer Baldivia for putting in so much time over the years to be with these students and build them up the way he has wanted to. You can meet a lot of these students in our local stores and businesses today. They're really prideful about being an explorer. That's one thing that I've noticed about all the explorers that I've come in contact with at Livingston and even from other communities. When folks have asked me if I was an explorer, they're very proud of being a part of the program. And clearly, that has a lot to do with the values that you instill in the kids and the way that you operate the program. And so, we would like to present you with a Distinguished Service Medal. And the council would like to offer that to you now, so if you'd like to come up, that'd be awesome. Also robbed you of a certificate too, I apologize.
I just want to say thank you so much to everybody that really puts in into this program. More importantly so, I really, really appreciate and want to say thank you to every parent that's here tonight to support your child. That's really what counts in this community. Without you guys allowing them to do this, this is impossible. So I just want to say thank you so much. There is one more thing that I just want to say. Raise up a child in the way they should go and when they are older, they will not depart from it. Proverbs 22 verse 6.
So, thank you everyone for being here. So, right now, we have one more presentation to do and then after that presentation, this was gonna be very short, about 40 minutes. No, I'm just kidding. Just a few minutes, we're gonna do another presentation and then we're gonna take a small break to allow time for, to take pictures and all of that. So, don't go nowhere, stick around. We're gonna do one more presentation, we're gonna go back, back here, do a presentation, and then we'll, we'll take a break, okay? All right, thank you everyone, congratulations again. So, next we have another item. We have a presentation by Mayor Moran, which is a service recognition of former Public Works Superintendent Tony Avina. And so, we are going to prepare just a real quick, short presentation. And I am going to read, I am going to read a, Tony Avina's life story. It's only eight pages long. Very short. And this was provided by, and, and thank you, Public Works Director Anthony Chavaria. So, Anthony Avina, serving the community of Livingston for 38 years. Tony Avina was born in Tijuana, Mexico, and moved with his family to the city of Livingston when Tony was three years old. Can you move to the next slide, please? Okay. This is Tony, I think he was 19 here. Now, probably a little bit older than that. Soccer, baseball, and fitness were a big part of Tony's life as he grew up in Livingston while in high school. Next slide, please. Tony attended ROP program for two years. During the two years, he helped build two homes, which consisted of earthwork, electrical, framing, and concrete work. Little did Tony know, but all of the skills he learned while in the ROP program would be to his benefit as it paved the way for his construction career to come. He worked many summer jobs, picking fruit, moving irrigation lines, and driving tractors for many local farmers within the Livingston area, which instilled a strong work ethic that Tony proudly carries to this day. Mr. Avina does not mind working side by side with the young bucks out of, in the, out in the field and I think he can still give them a run for their money. Tony was 21 years old when he married the love of his life, Gina Herrera. They have two beautiful children together, Alisa and Joshua. One thing that Tony loved to do when his kids got older was coach their teams. He loved to be involved in every aspect of his children's lives to help instill a good character in his children. No matter how busy Tony was with work or life, he always made it a point to be there for his children. Having, next slide, please. Having the wealth of experience from his prior jobs helped Tony start his career with the City of Livingston Department of Public Works. Gary Petty was the Public Works Director that hired Tony in 1987. Some of you were not born at that, before that. 1987 was a huge year of firsts for Tony as Gina was expecting their first child. They bought their first home in 1987 as well. Tony worked in the Streets Department for 10 years and did a little of everything from repairing roads to building maintenance. Tony started hitting the books to learn more about the water treatment and distribution certifications. Once he obtained his water treatment certification, he transitioned into the Water Department in 1997 and continued to further his education in the water treatment field. Tony spent many years learning the city water and distribution system. During this time, he repaired, installed, and read meters, tested backflow assemblies, responded to customer water issues, in charge of state-required water sampling, and was responsible for completing various state reports. The water treatment industry sure has changed due to stricter regulations adopted by the state over the years as well as advanced technology on how we treat our water. Many moons ago, Tony recalled certain tasks that were performed manually, such as backwashing filters, now a PLC, which is a programmable logic computer, automates these tasks based on preset parameters such as differential pressure or runtime. Next slide, please. Tony worked in the Water Department for 21 years and as of May 2018, Mr. Avina was promoted to Superintendent of Public Works. Tony has worked through the ranks of Maintenance Worker, Utility Worker, Lead Man, and recently retired from the Superintendent of Public Works position. Thank you for the many years of hard work and faithfulness of service to the community of Livingston, Mr. Avina. Your retirement is well deserved. And we have a plaque which reads, I'm gonna read it. City of Livingston Service Award, presented to Tony Avina in appreciation of your many years of dedicated service, devotion, and commitment to the community as Public Works Superintendent for Livingston, California, 1987-2025. Congratulations once again. And so, at this time, I'm gonna invite council to come to the front again and then Tony can come forward and then, I think he has a speech ready and prepared and then we can take some pictures of that. So, Mr. Avina, on behalf of the city of Livingston, I know that you already took some trips and you left without letting us know, but we said, no, he cannot leave without us bringing him back. So, once again, thank you for your service, 38 years. Right before I was born, you started working here. But, and we really appreciate your work for the city of Livingston. Thank you very much. So, Mr. Avina, a speech first?
Well, mainly for me, mainly for me, it's just a very big thank you to the city of Livingston, past, present, Public Works staff. We have the Police Department, past, present, staff, Fire Department, Parks, Racks Departments that I worked for for a lot, a lot of years, a lot of engineers, plenty of contractors, because I, that's all I did was work with contractors in the water, sewer departments, streets, parks. Thank you to the community of Livingston. It's not real easy to work for the city when you have all the eyes on you, okay? We do the best we can and believe me, I know because I got talked down... We do the best we can, and believe me, I know, because I got talked down to plenty of times, but always smiled and said, thank you. And most of the time when I went out to the community, if they were complaining by the time I got done, usually they said, thank you. So, that made me feel good. Thank you to my family especially. They put up a lot during my younger years, when I was coaching on call, I mean, I was gone a lot, but I was always there for them. So, thank you to the council, thank you to the past managers, and I've been through a lot of them, so, thank you to the present staff of Public Works that helped me get through my journey with my daughter too. So, thank you all, and thank you, City of Livingston.
So, I just want to say something real quick, besides, you know, we really appreciate all of the work that you have done, and I just realized something. So, you've been here, or you were here for thirty-eight years. I wasn't sure if there was anybody here longer than Gopal Samra, but now I just realized, yes, yes. So, thank you, once again. Can we take a picture? Someone, can, somebody take a picture? So, at this time, we're going to take a short break, and this will be an opportunity to continue taking pictures with the explorers and with Mr. Avina. Break time. And then there's some cookies in the back, and apple juice, and please feel free to have some cookies. Good evening, everyone, welcome back. We're going to continue with our agenda. Next, we have citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item not on the agenda. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes, and according with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening. So, this is the opportunity to, for citizen comments, regards to any items not on the agenda. Is there any citizen comments, anyone on the phone? Seeing none, coming back to the chamber, 801, is there any citizen comments in the chamber? Oh, we need to bring this, the podium back to the front, please, somebody. Thank you. Is there any citizen comments in the chamber? Seeing none, closing the citizen comments at 801. Let me just double check, is there any citizen comments in the chamber? Seeing none, closing the citizen comments at 801. Next, we have announcements and reports. Supervisor Jim Pacheco. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, thank you for allowing me to be here. First, I want to congratulate you, that was a very impressive group of young people there. I have a soft spot in my heart for the Explorer Scouts. I actually started as an Explorer Scout forty years ago, which led to a thirty-eight-year career, and the Sheriff's Department let me do it today. So, yeah, you should be, these young people should be commended. I congratulate the chief and his officers for what a great program they have. I'm going to have to figure out how to sneak some Merced County Sheriff applications to them when they're ready to get a job, so, but yeah, you should be very proud of that. I also want to say, congratulations to Mr. Avina, I think he left. Actually, like I said, I started my career in 1987, thirty-eight years ago, and he's figured out retirement, but I'm still trying to figure it out, because I'm still around, so. The only other report I have, I know that this has kind of been in, in the public eye for a bit, we had our, some concerns with our local libraries. I just wanted to come out and say, as myself and with my colleagues, for our library system, we have never wanted to do anything to diminish library services here in Merced County. We don't want to private, I mean, I see we don't want to close libraries, we don't want to lose our jobs, and it was looked into about seeing if we could save some money, but that would never be at a cost that would do anything to, to hurt our libraries. So, I just wanted to make sure, I, I wanted to put that out, and if anybody who wants to talk to me about it, my cellphone is on the website, I carry that all the time, I have my email address, and I have office hours, and you're more than welcome to contact me, and I'll, I'll talk to you about it, but I want to make sure that our libraries stay, stay the way they are. And that's all I have, unless anybody has anything for me?
Council, any questions?
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have city staff announcements and reports.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Council, I want to take this opportunity to also thank Tony Avina for his leadership, especially because Mr. Avina, in many occasions, after hours, weekends, when there was an opportunity to donate some hours, he was there, and, and so he went beyond, and you read a lot of the things that he did, but he went beyond, you know, the but he went beyond, you know, the call of duty. And I appreciate him and his institutional knowledge is already missed. But the good thing is he lives in town, so we're going to nudge him once in a while. The one item that, there's a few items that I wanted to share. I know that there's been quite a few residents that have been asking about the ACE train and what the status is of the ACE train and whether or not, you know, we're still competing with other municipalities. So the answer to that is, we went through this process and Livingston Station was selected. And so all the benefits that come with that will continue to move forward. I've asked Dan Levitt to come and, either him or his staff, to come and present to the public and to the council in the very near future. So I know that they're going to identify a date and time. In addition to the ACE train, if you might recall, that we merged that with the transit center. And so as part of the, we'll make sure that part of the overall presentation to council and the public incorporates those two aspects of things. The other one is Liberty Plaza. We, there's quite a bit of graffiti and there was a lot of trash that was brought to our attention by the mayor and some residents. And so staff went out there, police department, all the different departments, to make sure that we addressed all of those so the property owner was notified and responded. And so we anticipate that those items are going to be addressed fairly soon. The other item is the Measure L that the city passed took effect today. So we made sure that staff communicated to the different businesses, made some phone calls and shared that it's now eight point seven five and not seven point seven five. And so we went to a few places. We noticed that some had it and some didn't. So we'll continue to educate the businesses in that regard. And then lastly, the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four audit and single audit is completed. Happy is going to be bringing that to council for approval on the fifteenth of April. And we'll be publishing that on the website. So thank you, unless counsel has any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Comments? So, yes, so basically, I just want to make a comment real quick. I want to say thank you and to the, to city staff for addressing or visiting the, some of the concerns that were shared with me from residents. And at the same time, I do want to say thank you to the residents for continuing to reach out to the council and to myself with some of their concerns. And because sometimes that is the only way that we become aware of it. You know, it is just, it's very difficult for city staff to be everywhere and to become aware of certain concerns in your area or anything that you might see. So please continue to reach out to the council, to the city, to the departments directly. But if you don't know who to contact, always continue and feel free to reach out to the council members and to myself. Thank you for that. And so I do understand Anthony has a quick update from Public Works and then Jackie will have a couple of minutes as well on the mic. And now she's not going to sing.
Good evening, counsel. Anthony Chavilla, Public Works. I just wanted to give counsel and the community a quick update on well fifteen and seventeen renovation. The council approved renovation on both wells. The renovation has been completed on both wells and both wells are operational. We are waiting for approval from the state to authorize a permit amendment for well fifteen to change it from standby to active. Both wells have been cleared, have cleared by a tierological testing, which is required by the state. When operational staff initially started well seventeen, the well ran at two thousand gallons per minute. Since this well has been off for approximately two months, there hasn't been too much water velocity moving through that pipe. So the velocity change when the well was turned on created a scouring action inside the pipe, which caused turbid water. Staff was out flushing hydrants in the area to flush some of that turbid water out. We know that some of the residents seen some of that turbid water, discolored water, and staff was out there flushing and responding. The turbid discolored water is iron and manganese. We don't remove a hundred percent of the iron and manganese in the water. So after five, ten, fifteen, twenty years of water flowing through the pipe, the water leaves an iron and manganese residual on the interior of the pipe, the lining inside the pipe. So whenever there's a sudden change in velocity in the water, it creates a potential discolored water event, isolating water leaks, turning wells on and off, even turning hydrants on and off. That creates a velocity change in the pipe and creates a scouring action within the pipe, which can lead to discolored water. If any residents are experiencing discolored water, please call Public Works Department at three nine four eight zero four four and we'll send an employee out to flush area and take a look. I do have one more update. It's a PFAS update. Originally, council member Wallace had asked about this, it's been about a year now, about PFAS and what's happening in PFAS. So in March of twenty twenty-four, the city received a general order from the water board requiring the city to test its wells for, I don't know if I'm going to pronounce this correctly, for per and polyfluoro Kyle substances. Acronyms are PFAS, which are known as forever chemicals. PFAS are in hundreds of products from rain jackets and nonstick pans to firefighting foams and water and stain-resistant clothing. These chemicals have made their way into the drinking water in many areas. The city has tested all of its water wells and there is no PFAS contamination in any of our wells. So there's no further action needed by us. The testing was free. We did qualify for free testing, so we didn't have to pay for any of the well testing. If PFAS ever does show up in our water, our granulated activated carbon filters is a preferred removal option. So we are equipped. That's it for the update. Have to answer any questions.
Counsel, are there any questions, comments?
Yeah, real quick, Anthony, I know, where's seventeen at? Is that over by?
Sun Valley, Sun Valley Road.
Yeah, okay. And fifteen?
Fifteen is on Gallo Road.
Yeah. I got them too confused, okay. And fifteen's only going to be used in summer, correct?
The plan is only to use it during emergency situations when we absolutely need the water, if we do need it, just because it is higher in manganese and there's no treatment at that site. But right now, since it's only in standby, we're very limited on using it. So that's why we're, staff's trying to amend that to be an active well, back to an active well.
Thank you. I just wanted the public to know, thank you.
Counsel, anybody else? So Anthony, just real quick, I thank you for bringing that update. I think it's very important for the rest of the council and also for the residents to know what the, you know, have a broader understanding of what the process is and what are some of the things that you and your staff are actually currently working on? And that is the result of, you know, there were some questions that were brought up in regards to what was happening with the water and all of that. You know? And always feel free to call the city or the Public Works directly or anybody else on the council. So thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Ms. Jackie Benoit from the Recreation Department.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to give a quick update. As many of you may or may not know, we have a scholarship through the Parks Recreation and Arts Commission that has been renamed the Eva Yubara Memorial Scholarship. Eva was one of our recreation commissioners who is very active in all of our program. And she actually started the scholarship in two thousand and nineteen and donated the money herself for the first five hundred dollar scholarship. Eva's life was brutally taken in October of two thousand and twenty-three. And so we have renamed it the Eva Yubara Memorial Scholarship. It has been placed on however the kids at the high school can apply for it, but we haven't had a good turnout. So we decided we wanted to take it into our hands, promote it through the rec department, through our social media, because kids that would be eligible for this grant must have spent four years in my program. So there's a lot of kids out there and we know that a lot of them could use five hundred dollars towards school expenses. So it is on the city website under Recreation. It says Eva Yubara Memorial Scholarship. So if you see it on Facebook, please share it. And May fifteenth would be the deadline for applications and we're taking them at City Hall.
Thank you. Thank you, Jackie. Any other city staff reports? Okay, thank you. Next, we have city council members announcements or reports. Mr. Wallace?
Nothing to report. Just want to thank the city and those people that texted me while I was in the hospital last week for a while. Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Jason Roth?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank the explorers again. I think that was a great presentation, long overdue. Jeff, you thank you for putting on the agenda. I think that was very important for our community because they are at every event that we have here. Chief, thank you. Secondly, I participated in the Sikh parade this weekend. Great event, as always, lots of food. And I think this year, there's a lot more people than I've ever seen for some reason. But that's it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel member, Paul?
Yeah, I was also at the Nogga Kithin on Sunday, the Sikh parade. Did not eat any food, though. Was trying to stay away from oil this weekend. Had a great time, though, being out in the community with everybody. I had a one voice delegation meeting with MCAG last Thursday. Saw Mr. Pacheco there. It was great to see Ms. Pacheco and other folks in the county. Mr. Roth and I will be going to DC in a little bit over a month to go advocate. And we're going to be in the committees related to water, infrastructure and public safety. And so it's great that we get to be where our priorities are. Nothing else.
Thank you. Mr. Samra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, as Jason and Jeff Jeez already said, this Sunday, we had the Nogga Kithin, very successful. But as always, we rely heavily on the hard work of the police department, the explorers, Public Works, everybody in the city. For twenty-plus years that we've held the event, the support from the residents and the city has been phenomenal. We can't ask for better. And again, from bottom of our hearts, thank you to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have nothing to report for myself. Next, we have conflict of interest declaration. Members of the city council will declare an actual or apparent conflict of interest before discussions or decisions about any matters in which they are, they or anyone with whom they have close personal relationship could directly or indirectly benefit or where such a benefit could be perceived. Okay, next, we have the consent agenda. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine or non-controversial and will be enacted by one vote unless separate action is requested by a member of the public, the city manager, city council member. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the public, city council or city manager request that specific items be removed. Public comment on consent agenda items should be limited to three minutes per person regardless of the number of items contained within the consent agenda. So at this time, is there any public comment in regards to any of the consent agenda items? Anyone on the phone? Hearing none, coming back to the chamber at eight nineteen. Any public comment in the chamber in regards to consent agenda items? Seeing none, closing the public comment on the consent agenda items at eight nineteen. Counsel, are there any questions, comments on any consent agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, if there are no comments, I'd like to make a motion to pull the consent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do have a few questions on one item, if that's okay before we vote.
I will hold my.
I have a few questions on item eight.
Eight? So do you want us to pull that real quick and?
I don't think we need to pull it. I was just looking for some additional information from the chief, if that's okay.
All right, go ahead.
So chief, for this item, I see we are looking to purchase some additional plate readers, the flock plate readers. But I have a few questions on this. First one is, what is the need for additional cameras on top of the ones that we already own?
Okay, first, let me give an overall picture, thirty thousand foot picture. Flock cameras were already being installed in this city before I became chief. It would be problematic for us to switch to another system. But the answer is visualize a net cast in the water that had severe holes in it. What are you going to catch and what are you not going to catch? So it was decided by my predecessors and that over time, the flock cameras would be implemented in a sequential method to eventually cover the entire city. They are effective if the entire city is covered. They are less effective if it is not. So it's a long-term program based on financing.
Definitely. Thank you. Second question, so I see that we are leasing these cameras? And so long-term, is it more fiscally and operationally beneficial for the city to be able to purchase our own cameras rather than lease? And I saw that we have to go through this specific company because these are the only cameras that are compatible with our digital evidence system. And so if we were to get different cameras, I'm assuming we need a different evidence system as well. So what would be more efficient long-term?
Okay, I wish I could answer that question. I'm not competent to answer it, but I can give you some parts of it. Flock cameras generally are the Cadillac of surveillance cameras. Keep in mind that they do so much more than just surveillance. I would rather not discuss what they are capable of. It sort of offsets part of the security that they provide. They provide very high level of security for the town. I was just Googling, I was aware of it, but I was Googling the facts anyway. Towns that have implemented full flock programs have seen seventy to eighty percent reduction in crime. They're extremely effective tools. And I will tell you that they were significant in our solving, they were paramount in our solving the most recent homicide. We were aware of who this suspect was within the first day based on information that we gathered from those cameras. And then we were able to build a case on top of it. So not only are they preventing crime, but they're helping you solve crime at a significantly faster, less expensive rate than we otherwise would have done and also may not have found the answers that we were able to locate.
Definitely. Thank you. Last one. So in the.
And I'm sorry, I didn't finish. There are eight competitors and I'm not an expert in it to be able to tell you which are better than others. I know that flock cameras are considered among the best, but you were already heavily invested in them when I came here. So my best guess would be that to turn that battleship around and try and implement another program or implement another program wouldn't be cost-effective. I know one of the other huge benefits that we get from being in the flock system is a part of the flock family. Most cities in California and across the country now are going to that. We access their cameras, they access ours, including the CHP.
Nice.
Okay.
Thank you. Last one. So in the report, I saw the account number that's being referenced to make this appropriation, but I didn't see the name of the fund. Do we know what specific fund the appropriation is coming from?
I'm sorry, the general fund. The account is eleven hundred dash one oh two dash forty-four forty. I'm afraid that I buried it in the middle of a documentation.
Thank you, chief. I appreciate it.
Of course.
No other questions or comments?
So actually, just a quick comment, small edit on item number ten. And this is important because it is in the language of the resolution. So just before we approve it, on item number ten, which is the consideration of a resolution approving the revised job description for the Public Works Superintendent position on page sixty, I'm sorry, page seventy-one of the resolution. I'm sorry, page 71 of the resolution on the third paragraph where it says, "Whereas on December 6, 2024, Garland DBS Incorporated conducted a roof assessment of the CDC..." I'm sorry, no, that's, that's item 11, I'm sorry. Item 11. So on page 71 of the resolution, it stated that the previous council meeting was on December 6th. It is actually December 5th. So because it is on the resolution, we need to clarify that and make that correction. But other than that, I have no other comments. I was able to find that in my reading at 2:00 in the morning. Anything else on the consent agenda items? So I guess at this time, I will entertain motions.
I will restate my motion.
So we have a motion on the floor by Mayor Potem Samra. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by council member Roth. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Council member Roth?
Yes.
Council member Opal?
Yes.
Council member Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Next, we have discussion and potential action items. Item number 14, consideration of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with AquaMetrix for the installation of Sensus FlexNet AMI technology to provide advanced metering infrastructure technology in an amount not to exceed 101,121.25 and two, to waive formal bidding requirements as outlined in section 1-11-6. And three, authorizing the city manager to execute all required documents. Staff recommendation, approve resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. Staff is going to present the item. We also have Steve who represents AquaMetrix here in case there's any additional questions. One of the items that the mayor brought up and we wanted to highlight that was the sole source aspect and we'll go into that to answer the public's questions. So Anthony?
Thank you, city manager. So just a little bit of background on this staff report. So historically, city staff have relied on a drive-by water metering system to gather monthly water consumption data. This method involves a staff member driving around town equipped with a truck, computer, antenna and collecting necessary readings. When operating smoothly, which doesn't always happen, this process typically consumes two to three days each month diverting valuable personnel resources from other essential duties. To address this inefficiency, the city of Livingston would like to transition to a fixed base antenna system using advanced metering infrastructure. Technology AMI allows for an instant and accurate data collection from all water meters, enabling any meter to be read within seconds. The new approach will eliminate the need for staff to manually drive around for meter readings. That pretty much sums it up, the background. Be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any questions? So thank you, staff, for bringing this forward. And in the past, not necessarily yet with this item, but I think there was a couple of questions that I had and I wanted it to kind of be cleared, especially to the residents watching at home. In the past, I've had a few questions with some items. One of them was specifically to why and how is it that we have some items that come before the council and we don't have a bidding process? And so if you can explain in this particular case or in other cases, what are the main reasons?
Yeah, so our municipal code reads, states that anything over 10,000 is subject to a formal bidding process, but there also has a language, there is a language in the municipal code that states that there's certain criteria if met that council is able to bypass the formal bidding process. And one of them is sole sourcing. And this, this particular procurement would be a sole source, would qualify for a sole source option. And I can, I have Steve here. Steve is from AquaMetrix and Steve, would you be able to elaborate a little bit more on what qualifies AquaMetrix as a sole source?
Turn that on. Is it off?
Yeah.
Sorry. All right, just a couple of things. One, the city of Livingston has already installed some of the metering equipment that is compatible with our AMI system. So the main component of our system is called the SmartPoint, which is the radio unit that communicates with the tower. These units are currently being read by the drive-by system that Anthony has discussed. So by putting up a collector, the meters are already installed with the SmartPoints already installed will start communicating over the fixed network. Excuse me. Another reason for the sole source is the water meters. The city is also installing Sensus smart water meters, so any alarms on those meters are proprietary to our AMI system. So alarms such as leaks, reverse flow, any type of tamper alarms are compatible with only our AMI system. Those are a couple of main points.
Along with the AquaMetrix is the only authorized dealer in Northern California to, that sell these type of equipment, meters.
And our meters of, what is it, like 98% of all our meters in town are Sensus meters?
That's correct. So in these certain circumstances, it just makes more sense to ask council to forego the formal bidding process. It would just cost us more money if we tried to go out for bidding.
Yes, so thank you for the short, brief explanation. It's really, it really makes sense. And then, you know, so in this case, because we also had already 97% of our, like you guys mentioned, it would make no sense to, it would be almost impossible to find another system that would communicate with what system we already have and it would be, like you mentioned, more costly. But once again, for residents, always feel free to call and ask questions and continue to reach it out to staff.
One thing I did like, I do want to highlight, Mayor, is that if council does approve the staff report and the ability now that staff at City Hall will have is that whenever a customer has issues with their water bill, like I'm using too much water or I don't use this much water, there's no way I use this much water. Right now, we read one time a month, so we don't have that data to share with them. The AMI will allow meters to be read that already have the SmartPoint register on them to read in 15-minute increments. So those meters that have that smart meter, smart register endpoint on them, City Hall will be able to print out a graph and show, well, this is what you're using, you know, and be able to educate the customer.
The end goal is to be, you know, have 100% system because that's also going to help us with regards to water conservation. Because if somebody leaves home and they have, either they left the water running or there's a breakage or they have a huge leak, you know, somebody at City Hall is going to flag that and will make contact with the homeowner or the business owner. And in the other municipality where I was at before, we actually saw a huge difference also in the wastewater side of things when we installed 100% system. The other piece to all of this too, is that we're going to, the cost of labor and gas in this case, because we're still driving around, we'll be able to read everything in town and so that's the end goal.
Thank you. And then, this is probably for staff or I'm not sure if you would be able to answer, but in this, in this request, in this item, you mentioned that in the future, the idea is to replace the antennas, which, and it would probably, it would probably be two antennas to have good coverage. Do we know what that cost potentially is currently for those two antennas?
Right now, and correct me if I misspeak, gentlemen, but the survey that was performed, we would only need one antenna for complete coverage as of now.
Yes, that's correct, yeah. The propagation study did call for two antennas, but we, on all of our studies, we like to perform our studies with redundancy built in. So if one does go down, we will have the second one to pick up the 100%. But currently, one is necessary to read 100% of the city.
And do we have an idea what the cost is, even though it's not included here, right?
Oh, on, if the tower were to go down?
To replace the antenna?
Yeah. So the, so on the proposal that I wrote with to Anthony, I included a extended warranty program. So if anything were to go down on the antenna, that would be covered under that program. So that includes parts, labor, everything like that.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, any other questions?
Yeah, just a quick question, just, you said that it can detect backflow, water leak? I can understand how it would detect energy scarcity, okay? I would detect backflow, obviously, but how would I know the difference between, and I'm just curious, okay? It doesn't change my support for any one with the other. How would I know the difference between a leak and if you're running sprinklers? It's kind of odd, unless it, unless it measures over time.
Yeah, so it depends. Thresholds can be changed, but normally how it works for residential meters is that it looks for constant flow for 24-hour period of time. So on a one-inch meter, the smart register will actually look for that constant flow for 24 hours straight. Once it does see that, it'll flag it as an alarm and alert.
Okay, so it goes over a period of time. I was wondering, if you turn on the sprinklers, how's it going to know the difference? So that's what I would, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Council member Opal?
No questions, just a couple of comments. One, Mr. Steve thinks we're coming to Livingston. I know you guys work in counties up and down the state, so I hope you didn't have too far of a drive to get here tonight. But thanks for being here and answering questions and just a comment to Anthony and some of the other staff. I love seeing items like this. You said it in the staff report, it's something we've been talking about and it's something that's being done, just being proactive rather than reactive to certain things. Saving two to three days at the minimum of staff time monthly is huge. Chief, we had some items for PD where we're improving. So I love seeing stuff like this. You sent us a video not too long ago of a sludge stickener. I've never seen a sludge stickener in my life, but I genuinely could not stop smiling after watching that video. Like this is citizen tax dollars at work. Like little things like this matter. So I just want to say I love seeing stuff like this and I'm really excited about a lot of the stuff that's being done. So thank you.
Counsel member Wallace?
Yeah, Anthony, one quick question. Every meter in the city qualifies for this now? We got some old houses. What is our plan for the ones that don't have this?
I'll let the water sewer manager answer that question.
Yes, so right now, all our meters are compatible with the MXU. So as long as we replace the MXU, we'll be able to use existing meters. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct, yeah.
So you don't have to change out the meter on some of the old ones? The meter is just the heart endpoint?
Little antenna.
Okay. You won't necessarily have to change the whole meter, even the older Sensus meters, but you would have to change the smart endpoint on it, the register.
Okay, then do we have a cost on replacing those or...
Yeah, so we have approximately about 1,000 in the system as of now. We have 3,600 connections, water service connections, that'll have to be phased in with changing out these smart endpoints, which is going to cost in the range of about, where's the, about 400, 400,000 or so after all the changes are completed. To make this 100%.
100%, yeah.
With just sending all that information to the AMI network. Now, one thing as well, I'd like to add as well is once everything is 100% compatible and reading, we will have the option to, of a customer portal. And the customer portal will allow all our residents to access the, their usage and monitor their own usage as well without having to ask the city how much they're using and they can monitor their usage there and it's a great tool, conservation like the city manager stated earlier as well.
Yeah, also, Mr. Wallace, any new development, they're required to install, you know, per specs, these, you know, this equipment, these meters. And so the ones that we're looking at replace, replacing are the ones that are existing that don't meet those parameters.
Counsel, any other questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
Just a comment. This system, I think, is going to help us out greatly just due to water waste, how much water we actually do waste resident-wise, city-wise. We're always talking about water conservation. I think it's, this is a great tool and I think it's going to help just by reading through all this packet. I'm all for it.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
So before we move forward, there's just one item that I want to bring up on the staff report, just for clarification, on page 348, one, page one of the staff report, in the background section, it mentions us at the March 21, 2025, City Council Regular Meeting. Just for clarification, it is not March 21, it's March 18. So just to make sure there's no confusion, I mean, I don't think anybody else was able to catch that. But other than that, if, at this time, if there's no addition... At this time, I will go out for public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone at 8:41? Hearing none, coming back into the chamber. Any public comment in the chamber in regards to this item? Closing the public comment at 8:41. At this time, I will entertain any motions.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve by council member Opal.
I'll second it.
Second by council member Wallace. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Council member Roth?
Yes.
Council member Opal?
Yes.
Council member Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Item 15, discussion and consideration of a resolution appointing a member to fill the city clerk vacancy. Staff, I'm not sure who has any information in regards to this item.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, unfortunately, Monica was out the last couple of days and the last communication that she provided, there had not been any applicants. So don't know if you, if council wants to, you know, continue this item for the next council meeting or identify a different timeframe.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, due to the 60-day time limit requirement, we have to appoint someone today or it will go to a special election.
Mr. Mayor? Yes.
I was talking to our former treasurer, Catherine Shell. She said she had submitted through email to our deputy city clerk for attention of being requested or added to, for consideration to be the city clerk.
Okay, so because we have, so there's a couple of things, we have no access. Monica is out today, we have no access to her emails to get that. Apparently, there was an email that was sent to Monica. So, but legally, what would be the process in this case?
Counsel could conditionally approve the appointment pending verification of the email and meeting the requirements under the code to sit as the city clerk.
So, uh, i- if there's any questions or comments at this time before I go out for public comment? So at this time, I will go out for public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone? Eight forty-four? Hearing none, coming back to the chamber. Is there any public comment in the chamber? Seeing none, closing the public comment at eight forty-four, coming back to the dais. Uh, council, questions, comments, motions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just really quickly, I wanted to thank, uh, Ms. Catherine Shell Rodriguez. I know she'll be watching this, so she's probably our most engaged constituent, uh, by a lot. Um, has been for a long time and continues to do so. Clearly, we had nobody that was interested in the position. Um, and she decided to, to step up and save the city about eighty grand, um, and fill this position. So, uh, I, I know she's watching. Thank you very much. Uh, we appreciate all the time you put into the city. Um, and unless folks want to say anything else, I will motion to appoint Catherine Shell Rodriguez as the next city clerk.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Adding to Councilmember Opal's comments, she did state to me that if she is confirmed, uh, she will come by tomorrow and contact the City Hall, be sworn in. And we know she qualifies because she was already a treasurer. So she meets all the conditions, and we already know that. So I will second that motion.
So we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Paul, second by Mayor Potem Samra. And, uh, legal, do you have any?
I just wanted to add for clarity. Um, because, uh, this is an appointment at the beginning of a four-year term, it will only be for two years until the next regularly scheduled election. And then at that point, that position would be up for, um, real, uh, up for election at the next regularly scheduled, uh, election because you cannot appoint, uh, somebody to a position for longer than two years.
And, and, bless you. And since, well, I don't know, but if, uh, because Monica is the, uh, executive, uh, or the city clerk, uh, the, uh, deputy city clerk, and is there anybody else that would be able to, if she's not here tomorrow, was, and Catherine is able to come, is able to come in tomorrow, other than me, because, or I can be here, uh, uh, after four-thirty or at four-thirty, uh, w- will there be anybody else that would be able to, uh, legally be able to provide the oath of office?
Uh, unfortunately, uh, the only two options would be either you or, uh, or Mrs. Narros. Because Mrs. Narros is the designated-
Okay, uh, Happy's trying to say something.
Oh, can RC, okay.
Okay, so, um, with that, with that said, I can be here at four-thirty. If not, uh, once staff is able to reach out to Ms. Shell Rodriguez, then she can, uh, decide, uh, when is best for her to come in. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Opal?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember, uh, Mayor Potem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of five zero.
Thank you. Next, we have, uh, council directions, direction on future agenda items. Council, anything at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, this has been brought up in the past. I just wanted to make sure it didn't fall off of our radar. Uh, the, uh, the phased implementation plan of the administrative fee, um, that was last discussed, when we last discussed the fee, uh, during a council meeting. Um, just wanted to make, Mr. Mayor wasn't here at that time though, so I just wanted to make sure staff were aware, um, that we provided direction on that item. Um, but otherwise, nothing else.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wallace?
Yes, this would affect the chief of police and Cal Fire. And I don't remember whether, when the governor signed it, but he's going after privacy for the citizens. And some cities have already changed over where they cannot use a scanner to find out where fire went or police department. Now, I know our volunteers rely on that because I have a scanner. Now, is that the law? And if so, I'd like to have it come back. What do we, are we going to go with that? It's, some cities in California have already changed so that the fire department, the police department do a call to such and such an address. I don't know where it is. There's, and I need to find out more about that.
I believe he's talking about some law enforcement going from open channels to encryption-based radios.
Can you come up to the mic? Thanks.
Briefly, uh, our communication system is at end of life. Our radios are twenty years old. We will shortly be moving over to new equipment, which will be encrypted, encrypted anyway. So regardless of what the state does or any city does, it'll be a moot point very soon. Yes. Yeah.
And that'll be something we need to look at. I'm not sure if Cal Fire has just swapped over or?
We have not yet. Uh, we have not yet switched over to the encrypted, like the chief was saying too. Um, as for the PCF response, they are all included on an app-based dispatch system. So they're not listening to scanners, they either have pager or get the, uh, alerts per call based off an app on their phone.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, uh, with that, eight fifty meeting is adjourned. Wait, huh? Oh, so just a quick announcement, uh, we are going back into closed session. And then after, uh, four hours, we'll come back out. Meeting adjourned, eight fifty-one.